And repave with four inches of blacktop. The estimated project cost is $471,000. It's already budgeted in the street department's budget. The recommended special assessment rate is sixteen, $1,620 per residential parcel. If that is specially assessed at that rate, the city will receive about $116,000 back, which is roughly 25% of the cost. We have not received any written comments on this particular project. I have received a couple of phone calls with regard to questioning what it would cost them and things of that nature. So you could open it up for a public hearing. If you don't mind, I'll just jot down their questions and come up and attempt to answer them all at once.
Sounds good.
If anyone's here. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard? Please step up to the mic, name and address, just for the record.
Hello, my name is Dave Stodick. I live at 1605 North Washington Street. And my neighbors and I just had a few questions about what was taking place with the street. And I think he maybe already answered some of this, but one of the questions was, is our stru- is our street being upgraded to be a truck route? But I think he said four inches, so I'm assuming it's going to stay the same. The other thing is, are no truck signs, will they be staying in place?
I think if you ask the questions, then we'll have maybe Mr. Kaler come back up and answer them for you.
Okay. How long since our last street, or how long since our street was last redone is one question? What's the average life expectancy of these streets? You know, how did ours hold up versus what streets typically do? Will the west exit coming out of the warehouse, coming out onto our street, will that be closed off? Will that be left open like it is? And this is the million dollar question, which I'm sure no one was coming. We don't feel we should pay full price. Because of the industrial traffic that comes out and drove on our street for how long? And the city knew that the trucks weren't supposed to be driving on that street and didn't do anything to stop it. I get off work either at one o'clock or three o'clock in the afternoon. And just in that time period, you could easily see two to three semis every week drive down that street. So how many trucks were driving down that street earlier in the day that I didn't see? The biggest pothole that's in that street is right next to that west exit. And that's where it's actually busted up the most. So some of the other neighbors and I obviously feel that there should be a reduction in the fee for us as a result of that.
Good questions.
Thank you.
Steve, you want to come back up to answer those?
Okay, I'll try and catch them all here. Is it being upgraded to a truck rou- route? Absolutely not. This was constructed in 1975 was the last year it was put in place or reconstructed. That was the initial construction. So that's 45 years old, four inches of bituminous and four inches of class five gravel. It's a residential section. Actually, in today's design criteria, we use, we call that an eight inch section. We use a 16 inch section for a residential unit. If it's a truck route, we usually start at 30 and sometimes get to 48. So it's going back with two inches or four inches of bituminous, exactly what's there now. So it's not being upgraded to a truck route. Will the truck route, no trucks signs stay in place? They will at this time. It's a city council decision. Right now it's signed as no trucks. I don't know that I can commit the council to anything in the future, but I suspect that it will stay the same. As I mentioned, it was 45 years ago, 1975, when it was constructed. How is it held up or what is the life expectancy? That particular part of town, I, we're figure 40 or 50 years in that area. There's a little bit of clay as you go to the north. And that's one of the reasons why some of those streets down there have been reconstructed a little earlier. There's going to be no change in access. We're not changing any driveways, any curb and gutter. It's just strictly surface reconstruction. With regard to full price, we're only assessing approximately 25% of the actual cost. So that's, that's a city council decision. Anytime you can get fi- 45 years out of a residential roadway section, I think that's probably worth it. So, did I catch everything, Dave?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
You bet.
Yeah. Anybody else like to be heard? Anybody outside there? See none? Entertainer resolution?
I'll offer resolution, waive the reading, closing the hearing and ordering in the 2020 surface reconstruction project. And authorize the street department to construct this project.
I'll second it, but I do have one more question. Charlie was going to ask, okay, the 1620, Steve, per residential partial. Okay, the commercial across the street, I'm just going to call it commercial property, that'll be assessed?
The recommended assessment, counselor, is for that area or for across the street is six times or six units. So they're paying basically 1620 times six.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Is it the same amount pers- same amount as the residential side though? Or is it an increase in a rate?
It's one less, one less unit than they are paying. And since it's tr- signed as a no truck route, they're technically not supposed to be using it. And they could probably argue no benefit, so we're trying to make it fair. I think in my mind that that recommenda- recommendation is fair.
We as a council at the time, this comes back to us to approve that 1640. We can modify that if we...
1620.
1620. We could modify that if we chose to.
Yes, you can. That's the recommended, you haven't approved the final assessment rules yet, but that's the recommended amount.
That happens usually about a year, nine months to a year after you're done.
That's correct.
And is that a public hearing then too?
Yes, they'll get a notice at the end of the, probably this time next year about the, the amount and the final assessment hearing and have another opportunity to address the city council.
And then one other question is that, that 45 years that we've gotten out of that, pretty standard for a lot of the streets we construct, we reconstruct?
Counselor, it depends. We have some that last 25 years and some that last 85 years. Just depends basically on the subgrade. And the areas that have a lot of sandy soil last longer. Areas up on top of the hill where a few counselors live, don't last quite as long because they have clay subgrades that don't drain very well. So it depends.
So the, the, the trucks that have probably passed through there and when, how long has that conditional use permit been in effect? Up the, by the, the industrial or the commercial property there? Do you feel that has had any bearing on, on the deterioration of that street?
Well, it, it hasn't helped, but at the time, you know, I don't know how long it's been there. It's ever since or close to when, was it Randall's that moved out? And then it turned into a, kind of a warehouse area. It's been signed no trucks maybe a year now. Your decay curve gets to a point where you could walk across the street and you could break it with your foot traffic. It just is that point right now where whatever you do down there is not going to help the roadway. It just needs to be reconstructed, so.
Steve, would we have any advantage that we would want to just put curb and gutter in and eliminate the road access from there? Onto the road to help eliminate the trucks from going out there for the future, for the neighbors, for their concerns?
Well, that's a council decision. If you wanted to do that, we could, we could accommodate that. It's, it's not something we typically do in a surface reconstruction project. They're, they're not in tune to a lot of concrete work. So as, when we do the pedestrian ramp ADA corners, we do them on another project where we get a contractor. So it could be accomplished. I don't know what kind of traffic's coming out there right now.
You know, I'm going to agree with Counselor Mack. I mean, I'd rather bring it up now than assessment time. I agree with it. Maybe we close it up so the trucks can't go. If they run over the curb, so be it. Just decide to close those, close them up. It's not a truck route. That's 99% of the traffic come out of there. Do it right away and be done.
Make it part of the project and done with it.
You want to close all the driveways?
No, I mean, I can't, maybe you know, Steve, how many do come out onto Washington?
I'm, I'm not even certain. Probably two.
Is there just one or two?
Just one on the, toward the north park.
Eliminated.
Yeah, then we don't have it coming back.
Okay, if you include that as part of your resolution, we'll do it.
Oh, I have to. I will add that to my, to my resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Nobody? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Item 4.1, on sale liquor license renewal discount. Chris?
Good evening, Council President and councilors. This is an item that was brought to you at the last council meeting for brief discussion on what you thought a liquor license discount potentially could look like. So before you have kind of two options. One would just be to do a prorated amount, starting March 17, 2020. And the anticipated opening of bars and restaurants is June 1 of 2020. And then the second option would be to do the exact same thing, but put a cap on it. If you, there's about 34 on sale liquor license that would qualify for this, for this discount. If every single one got full discount, there was no cap. You'd be looking at about $10,556.85 that we would not be collecting in revenue for this discount. Again, before you, there's, there is, we already give a 15% discount and a 25% discount. Depending if someone has taken a training and if they haven't had a violation in three years and taken that training, they get a 25% discount. So, you know, I leave it up to the council to decide which direction you want to go. And then you, if you go the route with a cap, you would have to determine what that cap would be. Realistically, you're looking at about 11 weeks. So at the high end of 5769, you're looking at about a $600 rebate for that licensee. So that's a, the high end, so you can figure out what kind of cap you would like to set if you go that route.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions on how this is laid out. So when you say a fee of 250 and three licenses, that means we have three licenses right now at $250 that customer, or that...
Yes.
Licenses are being paid. Okay.
Yeah, so the number of licenses just coincides with how many are at that, at that level?
In the 15 and the 25 then are the discounts they're already receiving?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we had somewhat of a consensus last time, at least from my recollection, to have it up until when they open. Now, we're anticipating June 1. That's what our governor has stated. But he's also not opening at full capacity either, so the bars anyway. So I, I would prefer we do number one, the prorated amount for the time period, March 17th to whenever they officially open. And just in case the governor extends it another week, or then we wouldn't have to come back and, and modify it. But I, that'd be my preference.
I would support what Counselor Schultz said in that, prorating it from the beginning.
My thought would be is they have to re- apply for them and on June 1, correct?
July 1st.
Or July 1st.
Well, they're due.
They're due, yeah.
The new period starts July 1st, so they're actually reapplying right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
So that if we do it June 1, and it goes beyond that, because we don't know if we're going to see a cycle again where they, you know. We're hoping for June 1, but beyond that, there might be some more. And there might be maybe this fall, who knows, or this winter, we could run into it again. So if we cut it off to June 1 and then take care of it the following year.
Well, we still have that month. We'd have that month of June. Because the, it would end on, their current license ends June 30. And the new con- contract starts, our new license starts July 1. So we could say up till June 30 if you, if maybe as a preference. And then we would deal with the new license issue in the future.
Well, I mean, what we were planning on doing with rebate is having them pay their full fee right now and then rebating the portion. Once we know how long they're closed or how long you want to prorate it for, then rebating that portion of, of their license.
So they still have to upfront that money?
Yeah.
So not hearing anything else, I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to approve a prorated amount for the time period, March 17, 2020. To an, to an anticipated date of opening no later than June 30, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
President Schmitz?
Go for it. Roger?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just have a question. It's not clear to me if, for some reason, the governor opens them on the 15th. Is the rebate then effective through the 15th of June? Or is this going to go through June 30th even if they open June 1?
Counselor, my, my motion was that it would end on the day the governor opens the bars. So if they open on the 15th, it would end on that day. But if I don't...
So if he does it on the 1st, it'll be June 1 then?
Correct, yes.
Uh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's all I, that's all I understood it.
Yep.
So, so for the ones that are getting 25, 15 or 25% off, they're going to get another 25% off. So they'll be about half the normal cost of the license.
Yeah, to, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're still getting just the re- the rebate on the portion they would normally pay for the license.
Right. Okay.
So they're not getting the rebate on the full amount of the license, just in what they would normally pay.
Yeah. The full amount minus the 25% and then 25% of that.
Any more discussion?
Just a comment. I believe this is going to be one of the first of different types of businesses. I don't know what licenses we all issue or whatnot come budgetary time. I think we're going to be looking at that serious budget forecast we had for revenue. It's going to be down.
Because this will come out of the admin?
This will come out of the, this comes from general fund. So you're taking about, if, if things open June 1, you're looking at about $10,500. That's not going to the general fund.
Okay, it's an amount, but it ain't a huge amount.
I, I just don't believe it's the last one we're going to see. We're already looking at the 15, roughly 150.
The only other real expensive license that we have would be the building permits and everything. We don't, I mean, there aren't a lot of other licenses that are issued under our office, other than special vehicles and different animal licenses. So this is probably the largest of all of them.
Sounds good. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Ball's no, motion carries. Item 4.2, temporary on sale liquor license for the State Street Theater. And that's for Friday, August 28th and Saturday, August 29th.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion to second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Ball's no, motion carries. Item 5.1, approved airport master service agreement with Mead and Hunt Incorporated. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. This hopefully is a culmination of a process that we went through to select a airport consultant for a five-year contract. We're required to do this every five years according to the federal guidelines. We were authorized, or the selection committee recommended to the city council that we select Mead and Hunt for this particular pro- contract. We were authorized on April 7 by you to begin negotiations with them. We've gone through a process. They've submitted a airport master service agreement. The city attorney has done good work in sticking up for the city and, and working out some terms and conditions that he thought were for the betterment of the city. And I think he is satisfied now and he might want to comment, and I am as well. And hopefully you will approve this and we'll get the contract signed.
Thank you. Any discussion? See none? Entertainer motion?
Mr. President, I just will comment, Roger Hipper. Steve is correct. The Mead and Hunt, we've, you know, worked with them in the past. And I did request that they make a number of changes to the contract. And this company was actually very accommodating in doing so. So I think the final product that you're voting on represents a lot of flexibility on their part. And I don't have any objection to you approving it.
Thank you.
With that, I'll approve the master agreement, service agreement with Mead and Hunt, unauthorized city manager to execute the document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ball's no, motion carries. Item 5.2, award to contract for the 2020 Airport Hangar Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you. We had in our capital improvement memorandum and plan for this year, a reconstruction of some pavement around the T hangar area at the airport. We received bids on that on April 28. We had one better MR paving and excavating. We had it broken in a base bid. That was 805,000. We bid some extra areas, not knowing exactly what the federal and state participation was going to be. That came out about 339,000 for a total of 1.144 million. After discussing this with the federal and state aeronautics funding mix, they decided that the base bid was, they could help us with that right now. Originally, we were going to receive 81% funding between the two of them, but that got bumped up to about 84.15. So we, we are recommending that you award this bid in the amount of 805,036.95. There's rather a lengthy recom- recommendation from the consultant, but we've worked with these people many times. The city's cost of this is going to be 15.85% or approximately $128,000, which is about 25,000 less than we had anticipated. So I would recommend that we award this contract.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, any concerns?
Steve, when's the last time we did some major surface work up at the airport?
Well, we, the primary runway and taxiway were reconstructed in probably over a three or four year period. I believe 2012 through 15. So that was a major, major project. That came in probably about 11 million total. And I think we had 5% local share in that. So we haven't done anything since then really, so it's been...
How long of life would we expect for the airport?
For the primary runway?
Yeah, I mean, for this new project?
Uh, well, this...
20 years?
Yeah, I would think 35. This is pretty light traffic up. It's basically small planes. The, the area where the heavier equipment and planes go is concrete and we don't, that's in good shape yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to approve the 2020 Airport Hangar Area Pavement Rehab- Rehabilitation Project MR paving in the base bid amount of 805,036.95.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Ball's no, motion carries. Item 5.3, 2020, 2022 Boulevard Tree Planting. John?
Good evening. John Isley, planner with the City of New Ulm. This project consists of planting 222 trees in the city boulevard areas as specified by the New Ulm Tree Commission and city staff and approved by the city council. This work would consist of planting the trees and guaranteeing, guaranteeing their health and vibrancy for a year. In addition to that, that would also include mulch and they would also be staked. As previously authorized, the city received and opened three bids on Wednesday, May 6 of 2020 for this project. And we did receive three bids, one from Bellic Tree Service for 43,355. One from Traverse DeSue Garden Center in St. Peter for 56,038. One from Huffman and McNamara up in the metro area for 68,765. All bids were tabulated and, and found to be correct. So we are recommending to go with the low bid of Bellic Tree Service.
Thank you, John. Anybody have any questions?
Couple of questions. You said they provide mulch. Do they, do they water the trees? Who's responsible for watering them?
They're responsible for watering for that first year.
For the first full year?
Yep.
So I know in North Highland, a number of years ago, when we redid that, we lost 52 trees because they weren't watered and it was really hot and...
Right.
And, yeah, okay, good.
Right, so they're responsible for watering that first year. City staff has also talked to each other and are going to be monitoring those trees for the next two years following that.
And my understanding, this is all grant money?
Correct. This is all grant money from the DNR community forest grants.
There's no tax levy money involved, because originally I was thinking, we got to start cutting, this might be a spot to cut. But it is not tax levy money, so I'm going to go ahead and award the contract, or make a motion to award the contract for the 2022 Boulevard Tree Planting to Bellic Tree Service LLC in the amount of 43,355.
I'm going to second that. And then, John, when would the, the planting part start? In June or...
No, the spring planting season is pretty much over. They wouldn't be starting any planting until this fall. But talking with the contractor, most of it would be done next spring.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ball's no, motion carries. Item 6.1, change order number one, 2020, 2022 Boulevard Tree Planting. John?
Okay, so because when we received bids for these, this project, our bids were estimated based upon projects that have been done with the city, current and local contractors and what their bid amounts were for planting these trees. Well, as it turns out, bids came in substantially lower from what we had originally estimated. Therefore, we have the opportunity to plant another 119 trees at the same price that was, that was offered by Bellic Tree Service. As far as what species we'll be planting, we would be planting 17 more of each of the seven species of trees that were in the original bid contract. So that's what we'd be planting. And let's see what else. Well, we'll have another, we'll have another change order coming up and I'll explain a little bit more on how we'll manage that one as well.
Sounds good, John. Thanks. Any questions for John?
So again, we're still using grant money?
Correct.
So the total number of trees that will be planted is how many?
The total number of trees that we're looking at planting is going to be 120. So we're looking at roughly 325 right around.
So that 222 plus this year?
Yeah. And it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit, give or take, on if we take down one more tree or plant one more tree based on how our budget's going to work out in the end here.
Is the tree commission involved in this process? Tell me about, tell me about their involvement?
Absolutely. So I think it was two, it was last Thursday. I had brought this in front of the tree commission and asked for their guidance on if they had any concerns or ideas on which trees we were going to be removing and then any questions on replanting. We did make one slight change as far as new trees that we'd be removing. And that would be that city staff go out and, and select individual trees that look the worst, like their health is diminishing the most. And going off of that rather than the community tree survey, which we used last time.
All right, thank you.
John, could you touch base maybe how the trees were selected or what variety?
Sure.
You know, for the public knows within our community?
Sure. So we, we selected the seven different species kind of based on a number of criteria. Number one, long-lived trees. Number two, a hardwood, so they'll be able to stand up to things like wind and, and the winters a lot better. But they are a little bit slower growing. And then number three, trees that are seedless. So they wouldn't have like pods or walnuts or anything that would fall on the sidewalks or in people's yards.
The ones we all love, right?
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? See none? Entertainer motion?
We did.
Oh, we did. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Ball's no, motion carries. We'll go on to item 6.1. We'll go on to item six point two, change order number one again, 2020, 2022 Ash Tree Removal. John?
Okay, so, this change order is to coincide with the change order to planting trees. The DNR grant specifies that for every tree that we removed, we have to replant. So, therefore, um, because we're able to remove approximately a hundred and twenty more trees, we also, or sorry, replant a hundred and twenty more trees, we're also going to remove a hundred and twenty more trees. We talked with the contractor who was selected for that removal, um, which would be Ryan Tree Service out of Springfield. They're fine with honoring their price of sixty-five dollars a tree for removal. They would be looking at doing that removal, uh, this winter.
Thank you.
I'll offer the motion to amend the original 2020, 2022 Ash Tree Removal Contract to Ryan Tree Service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I have to tell you, this, this company moves and shakes and moves. When they cut, they cut, and I sat at my desk, and I could see them cutting in front of the courthouse, and, and they ran from tree to tree as they were cutting. I mean, they, and literally ran. The guy with the chainsaw, he would run from one to the next, and zoom, zoom, down they'd go, and I was impressed. They moved a lot of trees very, very quickly.
John, can you remind us, how many trees do we have that we think we need to remove?
How many? It'd be about three hundred and twenty-five.
Three hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah, so, we, we're getting a lot more bang for our buck than we expected in the beginning. Um, and to, to back on Counselor Schultz's comments, I have received phone calls from citizens on this project, and to be honest, they're calling about, they're, they're happy with the service that Ryan's providing, so.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Good to hear.
John, is this something that we're going to apply again for the future, for another round of grant opportunities?
Yes.
Thank you. Any more questions? See none? All in favor say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries. Item six point three, recommend that Brown County award the County State Aid Highway Thirteen Improvement Project Contract. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Brown County has planned a mill and overlay on Cassa thirteen, which in New Ulm is center street from Broadway to approximately Camel's Back Road. Uh, it includes, uh, like I mentioned, the mill and overlay for the roadway surface that is in need of some kind of rehabilitation. It also includes ADA improvements, which are bed ramps at intersections that are, uh, necessary as well, and then a new, uh, signal system at Payne Street in Center. We have a cost-sharing arrangement with Brown County in this particular project, and they have awarded the contract contingent upon your, uh, your approval or recommendation to award to the lowest bidder, which was MR paving and excavating out of New Ulm. The bid was approximately seven percent over the engineer's estimate. Um, and again, we're, we're recommending that you award the, or, uh, have Brown County award this contract.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one comment for the general public, a few people have asked about it, you know, the city spending money at this time. Steve, you want to tell them that we're going to use the state aid account?
Yeah, very good point, Counselor. This is coming out of our state aid account, which is gas tax money that we received on an annual basis that we can spend on our own state aid system, or MINDOT, or county systems. Uh, we get about, I believe, almost eight hundred thousand per year based on gas, uh, sales. So, in the future years, that may be a little bit less, but, um, we continue to, uh, I believe, spend this money wisely. So, it's not tax levy money that this is coming out of, and this street does need some rehabilitation.
Thank you. Any more questions? See none?
I'm going to offer a motion to recommend Brown County Award the County Thirteen Improvement Contract to the lowest bidder.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries. Item six point four, use the.
Mr. President, before you leave, I think this is Mr. Kaler's last RBA in front of the board. Would that be correct, in front of the council?
Uh, it is, Counselor, yes.
Thirty-three years of coming in front of, uh, the council and putting up with a whole variety of different people sitting at this table. Um, I want to, just on behalf of the counselors, thank you for thirty-three years of service, um, putting up with all of us, putting up with staff. Um, you've done a phenomenal job, and I've enjoyed sitting next to you for the last twelve years, even though you poke me once in a while when you want to get the meeting moving on. But, I've really enjoyed your professionalism and your attitude, your, um, just all the hard work that you've done for our city. You've, you've made our city a better place, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, I appreciate the comments. It's been, uh, it's been an honor to work for the city, and, um, I'm glad to have been, had the opportunity to work for you as well. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Yep, thanks.
Item six point four, use of the unimproved portion of Ninth South Street.
Dave? Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director. The applicant in this particular case is Franz Marty. He lives at eight twenty-six South State Street. On the south side of his, uh, property, he has an unimproved portion of Ninth South Street. The reason it's unimproved is because of the topography of the property. Uh, Mr. Marty would like to conduct two activities within that area. One is to replace an existing retaining wall that is currently there, and he would replace it with a concrete wall. And the second thing that he would like to do is to reslope part of that area so that he could get a vehicle into his backyard. We sent out notice of this request to PUC and city departments, as well as other, um, quasi-public, uh, in, uh, businesses, requested their comments, uh, received none back. We previously have allowed people to use public rights away with the license agreement, so I've talked to Roger Hipper about this. So, staff would recommend approval with three conditions. Those conditions are that if the proposed activities disturb more than a thousand square feet of land area, that Mr. Marty would need to secure a stormwater permit and submit an erosion control plan. Uh, secondly, Mr. Marty would enter into a license agreement with the city, identifying the activities that will take place um, within the right of way, and that agreement would be prepared by the, um, city attorney and signed by the city manager and the finance director on behalf of the city. And I might note that if you approve this request, we would not bring the license agreement back to you for your approval, that we would just have it executed then. Um, and then, thirdly, that the, um, cost to record the, um, license agreement, uh, would be, um, paid by Mr. Marty, and that recording is with the Brown County Recorder's Office. That would conclude the staff report. Uh, Mr. Marty is here if you have, uh, any additional questions.
I just had one question, uh, number one, um, if the proposed activities disturb more than a thousand square feet, you have to, is that the plan? I mean, it must be awful close to that if it's in there.
The reason it's in there is that that is a stormwater requirement that we have in our ordinance. So, we don't know yet exactly what his plans are for that area, but we just wanted it to be a condition so that.
If it does.
If it does, then he has to do this, so he's aware of that.
Is that a potential plan, Franz?
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. Um, my plan is to basically replace what's there. Excuse me, ru- remove one of the tiers, it's a double-tiered retaining wall, and then pull it back as far as I can to allow like a bobcat or something to get in back, so. I have a lot of trees back there that are, got big branches that I don't want to hit my house.
So, your plan is not to do that, but it may?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
As far as I know, I don't, uh, square footage-wise, I don't know if I'd break that barrier or not, but I'll have to approve or send in a plan for approval anyway.
Right, then you'll know if he sends, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none, entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve the request, uh, to use the unimproved portion of Ninth South Street, abutting the property for certain specified activities, and direct the city attorney to prepare the license agreement for that purpose with the following condit- with the conditions. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries. Item six point five, appointment to the library board. And that is, go ahead.
I'll offer a motion to approve Ruth Ann Webster to the library board to fill the unex- unexpired term of David Wendland.
Second.
First start to coming back into politics?
I know.
It might be.
Maybe.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Any more discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries. Item six point six, performance measurement citizen survey results. Chris?
This is just a, a summary of the performance measurement citizen survey that went out, um, for 2019. Um, overall, uh, everything, every department or every question went up, uh, with the exception of, uh, surprisingly, library services, um, parks and recreation services, and, um, city streets. And all of those went down by, um, no more than point oh three, so very slight variation. Um, overall, the city, uh, jumped from four point oh three to four point one one, uh, with overall satisfaction of, um, city services. Um, again, streets has always been the lowest, continues to be the lowest, uh, or conditions of the streets, and fire department always, always remains number one. So, overall, this was a very, 2019 was a very good year as far as, um, what residents or this group of particular residents thought of city services, as everyone went up, um, with the exception of those, those three, uh, departments.
Great. It's interesting how every year we do this, and the percentages stay so close to the same, and different people get them, so I guess it's realistic.
Yeah, and I think it says that we're doing a good job. I, you know, I try to look for trends too, and I, um, really didn't see any. I thought maybe we would see our new cat go up a little bit higher just because of going digital this year, and, and it did go up a little bit, but I was kind of hoping it'd go more, but that's maybe because I sit on that commission, but, um, so maybe we'll see that as the whole year turns out with digital. Next time, we'll have a full year of digital behind us, and maybe see a little bit more of an increase in that particular area, but. What's that? Roger? I think someone just popped in his office. Well, maybe he just coughed. Um, I think that's all I had.
Anybody else?
I guess, I have a couple of comments, uh, you know, I think, you know, we're going to have budget time coming up here, and again, we've, I've sat on this spot now for the last five years, and with our property taxes, it's an issue that, you know, we have to be looking at our budget and looking out for the people in our community, you know? There, a lot of them are on fixed incomes, and, and I think, you know, and something that we've seen every year here too is the bliteness, and, you know, we've, David and I have, uh, been on that committee for a couple of years, and, you know, we're slowly chipping away at that, you know? But, uh, it's just, want to make it aware of it, that, uh, certain things, you know, it's, it doesn't happen overnight. You know?
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I reviewed, um, the survey, and, like you said, they, they all kind of fell in line, there wasn't any drastic changes. I always gleaned the most from the comments, and the, the only common theme I saw really on the comments was, of course, related to the streets and, and snowplowing. They always take it, they always get beat up in this survey, but the one common scene, theme that I saw, and I don't know if it's something that can just be discussed or looked at, was they, there were several comments saying that they didn't plow all the way to the streets.
Yeah, that was new, that's a new comment.
So, that was new to me, and I just thought that that might be something they just want to kind of, that I gleaned from it, that they might want to just take a look at.
Yeah, and, to the point of the comments, you know, the comments are usually spread, um, between the departments, and they can take a look at that information um, and adjust, um, adjust if needed, but, you know, I'll let Kurt and Jeff know that that was something, a topic of concern.
The other, the other thing.
It's a new procedure maybe, or, I don't know.
Right.
New staff?
Well, I know.
A particular driver.
It has to do with the amount of snow, and they can't get up to the curb, that's a lot.
Well, that, and I think if they go too close to the curb, then it goes onto the sidewalk, and then you get a complaint that they're filling the sidewalk. So, I, I think there's, it's a double-edged sword, but it might be just, it's just something that I noticed as a common theme. And then, the other thing is, is that there's a lot of people out there that are really happy with the services that we have, and their comments too. They really enjoy the city, enjoy the services, and really like living in our community, so that's always good to hear.
That's a good point, Counselor Fisher, because I think we're always so quick to look at the negative, and, and there was a lot of very good stuff in there, and, and people very happy about living in our community and the services we provide and, um, at a city level, so, I mean, that's, uh, we have great employees, and.
Right.
They do, they work hard for the city of New Ulm and the people that live here.
Thank you. Any more questions? See none, make a motion, order, receive it?
I'll offer the motion to receive and file.
Second.
Um, one more question, or just comment. Uh, this will be out on the website for people to look at, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries. Item six point seven, donations to the Park and Rec Department. Okay, I was, uh, at the Park and Rec meeting on May 11th. I'm going to offer the resolution, weigh the reading, accepting cash donations, and a pledge for the German Park Amphitheater. Overview, item one, honoring Janet and Terry Dempsey, a hundred thousand dollar matching pledge from an anonymous, um, anonymous donor. Honoring Art and Mar- Marleus Lombrick, two thousand dollars from the Art and Marleus Lombrick family. Two hundred dollars from Bruce Lombrick and Jeannie Braun. Two hundred dollars from Dwayne and Diane Lombrick. Two hundred dollars from Kay and Bart Zabrowski. Two hundred dollars from Ken and Diane Lombrick, and two hundred dollars from Marcy and Don Belter, Be- Belt, Betler. Okay, a thousand dollars from Ruth Ann Webster. Thousand dollars from Ruth McCray Simpson, this is her second payment of the third of her pledge of three thousand dollars. Thousand dollars from Marion and Gary Glemick. Honoring Arlen Schmidt, a hundred dollars from Rich and, Richard and Sally Roloff, and seventy-five dollars from Linda and Alan Mounts. Hundred dollars from Linda Postle. Hundred dollars from Ruth Colpean. Fifty dollars from Shirley Goring, and twenty-five dollars from Eunice Olson. And again, thank you to the Park and Rec, I still think Tom Schmidt should be in charge of all city fundraising. Thank you, the Park and Rec.
And I'm sure our mayor get the thank yous out, so.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, weigh the reading, accepting the donations, any more discussion?
Huge thank you to all our donors, of course.
Maybe we could have, uh, Tom touch base a little bit on our shade structure that's on here on the agenda, or, you know, just for budgets, people, the community knows some of the details.
You want to come up, Tom?
Tom Schmidt's Park and Recreation Director, President Schmidt's counselors. Uh, the question had to do with the remaining element unfunded and unauthorized for the Performing Arts Center Amphitheater, and that is the shade structure. It's on the top, um, accessible roll. Um, and, uh, just a little bit of an update, some more money has come in. We actually have nine hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and three dollars in, as of this moment. So, a bid has come in since the packet was put together this past Friday.
Leaving a balance of about what?
Um, well, actually, um, there's a smaller amount that would yet to, need to be authorized to, to do the shade structure, and that is about fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, the one point two million includes all associated, um, expenses. The fifty-five thousand dollars needing yet for the shade structure and authorization is just for construction. Okay, the one point two grand total is for design contingency, soft costs, and soil borings and things like that. So, if the council at some point in time were interested in moving forward with the shade structure, fifty-five thousand dollars in further authorization is all that would be necessary at this moment in time for construction costs.
We can maybe get that by the next meeting, right?
Possibly.
Before the project is done, we can add it.
That would be our goal.
Tom, do they have a completion date in mind that they're looking at for this project?
Um, it is early August is the, uh, projected completion date.
And if they would want to go ahead with the shade structure within our community, was there, what kind of lead time is on something like that?
There is significant lead time in manufacturing that. I would say probably a good six weeks, six to eight weeks in lead time would be my estimate. But yeah, I mean, if you've been down there and seen the progress, they've made.
Kind of cool.
Excellent progress. Art Stone, American Art Stone Incorporated of New Ulm is providing the seat block and all of the manufactured stone. It's beautiful, it's kind of the tan limestone color, great local producer. And things are coming along well. I know they've got one of the two ramps complete from German Street Sidewalk to the top of the grand staircase. So other than this monsoon we had on Saturday, things were going very, very well, and a little bit of rain slowed things down a little bit.
But it is looking nice.
Yes, and again, the seating capacity is, is significant, five hundred and fifty people. It will be available for all types of performing arts, musical concerts, theatrical performances, and many different public and private events. Including National Night Out, even the, I heard the fire department might be interested in the Fireman's Dance there at some time. But also, we anticipate it being the premier wedding venue, outdoor wedding venue for the region also. So it would be nice to get that shade structure completed this year, and fundraising continues full speed.
So how much needs to be, how much more needs to be raised for, to, to get the, the shade structure?
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
Thousand, approximately.
For construction costs only.
What other costs are you talking?
But the grand total of going towards one point two, we have. Two hundred and seventy thousand remains to get us to the one point two million. Because we've got nine hundred and thirty raised to date, and the city, all of that is private funding. Except for the hundred and fifty thousand from the EDA. And the hundred and thirty-five thousand from the Park and Recreation Fund over a few years, so two eighty-five is, is what. You know, the city has put forth, and we've got two significant private donors, one at three hundred K and another at two hundred K. And then other donor.
But those are matching funds.
Part of it is. One of them is partial.
Yes, we still need. About seventy thousand to come in on this last matching, the hundred thousand dollar matching one that you see today.
So. This evening.
So anybody donating now, a hundred dollars would be like donating two hundred dollars because of the matching, is that how that works?
Yes, yes, although I have included the hundred thousand dollar matching pledge in these numbers that I've just given you.
Okay.
So we do need a little more than fifty some. If you included that hundred thousand into this, nine hundred.
Correct.
So you're saying like two eighty for everything yet, for sure?
Two sixty-nine, four hundred to get us to the one point two million.
And then another fifty-five thousand for the shade structure.
Well, no, and.
No, 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 no.
No, that's with the shade structure in there.
Look at number one. Includes the shade, shade structure.
So it's.
Two hundred and sixty, did he say?
I said two eighty, but that was my guess.
Yeah, the two eighty-two, although we have just brought in twelve thousand dollars this past few days.
Tom, do you think this is something that you're gonna bring to the council, back to the council between now and August? If you see that there's opportunity there, or?
Yes, we are hopeful that the fundraising will be completed within a matter of months.
I think it'll be a premier park in our community. Well, it is a premier park, it'll just even be better now. I think a lot of people, it's gonna be used by a lot of folks, and, and our older population is gonna really love that they're gonna be able to actually hear the music. And be part of the events when we, this gets completed, and I think it'd be a lot of excitement in our community once this is ready to go, so. So donate.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
No more discussion? Finance Officer, just call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six point eight, New Ulm Fire Department donations.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the hundred and fifty dollar donation from Jack Minch.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion? That was offered resolution, waived reading. Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries.
Thanks, Jack.
Item six point nine, extend the declaration of peacetime state emergency involving coronavirus pandemic, Chris?
This is just keeping that emergency, peacetime proclamation in, in effect until essentially the governor's goes away. So if he has any decisions or changes, what his orders are, we can make those adjustments on the fly. You know, it's kind of been working out that when he makes his announcements, council meeting happens to fall directly after that. But it just gives, gives me the ability to open and close things without having to come to council, and right now, it's more just opening. Opening things on the fly from the information we get from, from the governor.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Otherwise, entertain a motion, resolution?
I know that kind of falls into six point ten, but we're gonna have a discussion about opening, but.
This is just a peacetime.
This is just the extend the peacetime declaration, alright.
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading approving the extension.
Second. We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item six point ten, discussion on the plan of opening the city facilities, Chris?
So this is kind of the re, reopening plan tentative, and so we'll start with City Hall and the PUC offices. So we're looking at a June third, twenty twenty opening, and the reasoning behind that is City Hall. You know, when you're looking at the resident, or the executive orders and everything, I would consider City Hall a place of public accommodation where people can gather. You know, need to pay the utility bills, and effectively, all those establishments, bars, restaurants, places of public accommodation. Are slated to open June first. Now again, if council wants to open sooner, again, we can, we can do that. To me, opening City Hall and the utilities, you know, if we can do Thursday so we can get staff in place. That would be, that would be fine, or even next Monday, but June fir-, June third is kind of that tentative opening date. That we have slated at this point. Moving on to parks and recreation, starting tomorrow. All playgrounds, restrooms, BMX, skate, and the dog park are gonna be open. The playgrounds are going to be signed that they're not sanitized, use at your own risk, same thing with picnic tables and benches. They will be signed, dog park, skate park, and the BMX park will all be signed, no more than ten individuals. In there at a time, and social distancing should be. Should be recognized. As far as the field house and the civic center, we're looking at a potential opening of June first. But again, that'll really come down to what the governor says over the next couple of weeks on how fitness centers open up. When the field house does open, it'll only be open for fitness and cardio. As again, right now, no contact sports are allowed. There'll be a limited numbers of users, and that'll be determined by the governor's orders. No users under the age of fifteen, and there'll be reduced hours of operation. As far as the civic center goes, the recommendation at this point is to pull, shut it down, pull the ice from the facility. At this point in time, for the month of June, they only have about thirty-seven point five hours of rentals. That's less than ten hours per week. That, that would probably bring in about fifty-five hundred in revenue. Utility expenses in twenty nineteen for that month were sixteen thousand dollars, so it's not even really bringing in half the revenue to have it open. Same thing for the month of July, they have about fifty-two hours, just over thirteen hours a week. That bring in about a little over eighty-one hundred dollars, and total expenses for utilities in twenty nineteen were eighteen thousand for that facility. So closing it down will save some money at that, at that point in time. The steel don't rent any ice during that, that time. It's usually open skate and ice skating rentals. So the, the last building for Parks and Rec, Community Senior, Community Center, Community Center, that's to be determined. Again, that's a high risk population. When we open that, that's gonna be a judgment call on, on that, so we're just keeping it open to be determined. Summer programming, it says canceled at this time, again, just choice of words, delayed at this time. If the governor allows, you know, contact sports, we can ramp that back up. It'll be a shortened season, but at this time, it's just delayed. Reservations and meeting rooms and facilities, again, that's also to be determined by what the, the governor says in the next, in the upcoming weeks. The library, they're looking at opening to computer use, for computer use by appointment only, starting June first. Looking how that works out, and then potentially opening to the public mid-June. Again, that'll be limited number of users in and reduced hours of operation. Staffing, that's bringing back some part-time workers as needed, and then suburb programming at the library facility itself has been canceled. And then they'll still have some virtual programming available online, and then reservations of, of space in the library. That's been put on hold until August first. So that's kind of where we are as far as a. A phased opening plan, again, just kind of the library, and the Parks and Rec Department is kind of governed by. What the governor says in the next couple of, couple of weeks.
Chris, I was just, I received a call, and this individual has a daughter that was eleven years old, you know, and a figure skater. And was concerned that we had an age limit at fifteen, and I think you might have already answered the question, because you said June and July were gonna be no ice.
Yep.
So. On that aspect.
I know, it's always about the safety of our staff and safety of our citizens. I know that the county did open up today. The doors are open for a majority of the buildings. The courthouse and. The Public Health Department are by appointment only for like a week or so, and then they're opening the doors. So I'm, I'm wondering if, why we're waiting till the first, if there's a reason, if we're waiting for signage, if we're waiting for staff. If we're waiting for, if we have reasons that we're waiting, otherwise, why would we not open sooner?
So like I said before, it's place of public accommodation, those are gonna open up on June first. Again, we're not supposed to have gatherings of more than ten, again, we're kind of in a gathering more than ten right now, so we're technically in violation. And so it's just keeping along with that. We already have it marked for people to have social distancing, you know, and it's kind of hard when you're in confined spaces. Again, county is gonna have people sit in the hallways potentially, and things like that. You have longer corridors where we essentially don't. But again, if, if opening sooner is what the council wishes, we can do that. It's, it's more for safety of people, again, when we open full bore to the public, we're gonna have to have all the finance people in their office. They can't social distance in any way, shape, or form, so it's gonna be a little bit different on how they operate there. So again, it's safety, because again, if one person gets sick, then they're all gone, then we provide no service for probably three days at a minimum. And then we'll have to ramp back up again, so safety, it, it's kind of a crap shoot.
Be the difference between now and then? I mean, anything?
Two weeks, I mean, again, it's everyone's best guess at this point.
So my question would be is, what are they doing for like PPEs when they come back to work? Are they wearing masks then? I mean, in that situation, in that office, they all will have to wear a mask if they can't socially distance.
Yeah, they'll be forced, or mandated to wear a mask at that point in time, again. Interaction with the public isn't the main issue. Because again, they have their, well, for lack of a better term, their bandit barrier up, so that pretty much helps them there. It's just more staff internally having to be in close proximity to each other, and again.
Do we have a policy for, for employees that might be in that vulnerable group? That, you know, have pre-existing conditions, or what is our policy for that?
So anyone that has a pre-existing condition, we can move them somewhere else in City Hall. Again, there's, the office next to me is essentially wide open. It's just putting a computer in there because they need access. You know, but outside of that, it's kind of how, how people feel comfortable. Again, I think everyone in finance, they're ready to come back. They want to come back, but again, it's want versus safety at that, at the same time. Again.
We, we, but with our barriers down here in the glass, we probably have more safety than a lot of, you know, the stores that are out there. So I, I'm not too concerned about the public getting, you know, our employees coming. Because we've got all our other crews out there working side by side with other contractors and, and stuff. You know, if we have a plan in place for PPE within our offices. We should probably be bringing those people back, I would think.
I guess I agree with Les too, I think. Going to June first, I think we ought to personally move it up to next Monday. Kick her in the butt and get going. I mean, we, we're open to the public here. I mean, we got people coming in, building permits, everything, and this is what we're, this is our job.
Yeah, even today, just walking in, I get an envelope, you know, because somebody came to the door and couldn't get in and wanted to pass on an envelope, and I. It's, it's the taxpayer's house, and I think that if, if it sounds like from what you're saying, just a matter of picking the date. Then I think we should open, if it's a matter of not having enough safety stuff in place, and I don't hear you saying that, that, you know, should the twenty-fifth be the, you know, should next Monday be the date? Because it probably is, you know, when you have people out this hallway here who gotta pay their tax, pay their electric bills, and sometimes I've seen a group there. But then they probably gotta X off six feet distancing marks and.
And we already have.
Same thing up on second floor when people are getting their building permits, and there's probably a few things like that that still need to happen, but.
But Monday's a holiday anyway, so we're actually gonna be on Tuesday, so.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So just.
So really, it's four days.
Four days.
We're talking about four days.
That's fun.
You know, and.
Is that realistic for you if we were to say the twenty-sixth is the opening date? I think you just basically gotta do a press release to the public, and that's, doesn't take too much time.
I think we gotta get open, and we have to go, go on, and I think we just have to stress to employees not to congregate, keep your distance. You know, I work in a factory, you know, we're all told to stay.
Schedule breaks different?
Yeah, you know, there's some things that you have to get, you know, try to keep your social distancing, you know.
How many people work from home?
At least it yourself.
One, two, three, four.
Approximately, you don't have.
About five.
Okay, so not many. So would they continue to work from home, or would you be expecting them to come back to work?
I would say the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director, yeah, probably would, to limit the number of people that are down in that area.
If it's working, why not?
Yeah. Kind of keeping in line with, with the executive orders that he has, if people, if you can work from home, you should work from home, so we're just keeping in line, keeping in line with that.
But I don't, you talked about, I thought I saw an ad for Park on the Go. Is that, so that would be a community program, right? Is that operating, Tom?
No, none of our programs are operating.
Why did I think I saw that? So I'm, okay, but the one building that we probably don't want to open is. The senior center or the community center.
Yeah, that, that, that one is gonna be the, everyone's best guess on one, one that's gonna potentially open, just because it's a high risk category.
But they could open if they were in groups of ten or less, then somebody's gotta manage that.
Yeah, technically, and then, and again, that, to me, that's, that's, that'll be the last out of all the park and rec facilities. That'll be the last one that, that we open.
Are we getting any guidance on that? Like, the library to me is like, kind of critical to have open for people and stuff. So what are other libraries doing? I mean, are there any others that are open?
The only one that's open is Springfield?
They just said tonight, so they actually aren't open, they're being ready to open tomorrow, but they're the only library within Traverse Tussle. That is slated to open, as is Northfield in Minnesota, all the other libraries.
Maybe we should have her step up.
Step up at the mic. So the public know, who's your name and address for the record?
Uh, Paulina Poplaska, library director, um, so within, we haven't really received, I've talked to, um, with Chris, haven't received much guidance from the Minnesota Library Services. There's only, um, Springfield is the only one who decides today whether they will reopen tomorrow. Otherwise, um, North Field, I believe, either opened on Monday or will open next Monday. There's about three hundred and sixty-some libraries within, um, Minnesota. And those are the only two that I know of that are slated to open within the next two weeks. Um, the libraries within Traverse Tussu, which we're a part of, um, kind of ran a, ran a gamut in terms of when they plan. Some are providing virtual programming, some are not for the summer, most have really revamped their summer reading programs. Um, we're providing virtual programming, that's our plan for now as we kind of work through that. We started contact lists, pick up of materials on Monday, and that's working pretty well. We've gotten some really amazing, um, comments from patrons. And I think us opening up for computer use by, um, uh, appointment will, um, kind of fill that need on June first. And then kind of work through as more staff kind of get into the building, things like that. Right now, we only have, um, our, um, some of our full-timers working from the library, others work from home when, uh, depending on what they're doing.
How do you resolve like this, I mean, last time there's some talk about sanitizing books when they come back, what?
Uh, so the, um, C D C recommendations are three days, seventy-two hours, which we're doing by opening up the book drops on Mondays and Thursdays. We lock them up at the end of the day, leave them in there, and we have that, that bunker behind that one, um, door. And so that's working well, um, I know the only library within Traverse Tussu, um, is sanit- sanitizing all materials is Saint Peter, no one else's, everyone's just quarantining materials. Um, so, and it, that is a question of P P E, we are, um, fine for now, but we did have a bit of, um, backlog in our ability to get P P E, like sanitizing wipes and stuff, but our maintenance technician put another order in. So as we reopen, we don't know what that will look like as every, you know, other organizations.
So will you be requiring masks?
Um, I will.
For staff?
Staff, yes, we will be wearing masks. As, um, new patrons, it'll be strongly suggested, highly recommended, but, yeah.
They probably should be highly recommended in all our city buildings. Great, thank you.
Anything else?
The other one that I, that I wanted to talk a little bit more about was the ice removal. You know, with so many, the ice removal.
Oh, yeah.
With so many programs being cut, you know, would, would that activity on that ice be a source of being able to kids get out and do? Or would we have to limit the amount on the ice, or you know what?
It would be limiting the, the amount on, on the ice, and again, that's still the unknown at this point. At this, at this point in time, we can only have ten people on the ice, they wouldn't have access to locker rooms to change at this point. They would have to come in their gear, go on the ice, exit the building.
You could have a lot more than ten people on the ice.
I'm thinking recreational.
Yeah, can only have groups of ten.
Yeah, I'm thinking more recreational, if we opened it up more recreational hours.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Um.
I think kids want something to do.
Yeah, I think, you know.
For their kids.
They, they can't go swimming, they can't, you know, do a whole lot else if we had another activity that they could do.
The question we always ask the staff, are the ice arenas in the state of Minnesota open? Tom? No.
At this point, no.
Could we go by appointments, you know, that first ten, you know, for such and such a lo-, a block and? A lot of ten in at a time?
They're not open now, but will they be open on June first, or?
Uh, at this point, I don't think anyone's looking at opening their ice for the entire summer, everyone, they've shut it down.
Is those the cost of maintaining that ice way out, more, way outweighs the revenue coming in, I suppose?
Well, it did on a normal year, but I know.
To do all summer long.
Question for Tom, I probably shouldn't even ask it, but I know the answer. What about our waiting pools for the kids during the summer? Cause we're, we're gonna see those eighty degrees this coming week and stuff like that.
President Schmitz and counselors, uh, can I first of all touch base briefly on the ice? Um, June and July are probably our lowest months of the year for revenue and activity, um, a- on the indoor ice in the civic center, so there's very little revenue, very high expense. And with the virus, we know that the associations and clubs are very leery reluctant and probably canceling before we even close. So, um, I think, um, keeping the civic center closed until at least August is a very wise decision for the community. This is summertime, kids should be outside playing outside, families should socially distance outside in parks. And, and I would, if this were winter, it's a whole nother story, it's hard to skate outside sometimes in the cold winter. So those are my thoughts on ice skating in the civic center in the summertime. Uh, the waiting pools at this point, um, I'm not aware of any municipalities that are opening their aquatic, outdoor aquatic centers, um, for the summer. So our recommendation at this point in time is to not open the waiting pools nor the splash pad. Um, pending, um, state and federal, uh, recommendations and where the virus is come summertime.
Yeah, fill them with sanitizer, huh?
Correct.
So how quickly can you have them up and running if all of a sudden they decide that a waiting pool can be open?
I would say a week. Possibly less.
Cause you can control the number of people that come into our waiting pools, because with their fence, our splash pad is not fenced, right?
Correct, correct.
So you could control how many people come into the waiting pool?
Yes.
So if we wanted to. Do that, we probably could, it might be.
Correct.
Not real fun when that eleventh parent comes with their kids, but.
Correct, correct. But mechanically and, and staffing and, uh, maintenance-wise, we will be prepared, we're ready, you know? Um, I mean, we're not gonna fill the waiting pools until it's, it's safe to fill, but it doesn't take long.
Maybe the fifteenth of June, the governor will say something different or whatever.
Correct.
We're ready to go.
Changing all the time.
Summer months.
Correct, so the outdoor aquatic facilities are available for you to make a decision on, but I don't think we need to do that for some time.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
So do we, I don't know if I see a motion here at all, I think it's just a discussion.
Yeah, it's a discussion.
So, you kind of hear us saying the twenty-sixth?
Yep.
Okay. Um, all right, you don't, and you don't really want to motion on any of this stuff, right?
No, 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 this is.
All right, let's check it. Thank you, thanks to the staff, cause I mean, this has been, this has been a lot of work and, and being working in government, I know it's been. And whether it's private or government, this, this pandemic has, has been a lot of stress and a lot of hard work from people and doing things differently, man, we're doing things differently, and I think we're gonna learn some good lessons. I really do, I don't think we'll ever go back to the old way of doing things totally. Uh, I've sure learned some different ways of doing things and I've, we're learning Zoom, aren't we, David?
I'd wanna make one comment with this, Chris, I mean, I've gotten used to wearing the mask, I brought it with this evening, in the businesses, whatnot. And I noticed, I caught the library director said, well, we might, do, do we, cause the council need to do that? When you're in close proximity in that P U C office over here, you're wearing a mask. I just, I don't understand that you're gonna leave it up to the supervisors? Yes, our people wear a mask.
Leave it up to Chris.
Yeah, so, you know, at the library, it's probably gonna be more of a mandate, because they're gonna be in closer proximity, same thing with finance. P C, P U C, they don't, because they're all spread out across the building. Um, so again, it'll be, if you're in close proximities in that close quarter confined office, yes, it's gonna be more of a mandate. Again, like finance, well, everyone in finance is gonna have to wear one just because they can't social distance.
And we should have signs for the general public to wear a mask and scarf, a bandana, something to cover.
Well, and it, I would think that we would be able to mandate that if you're coming into a city building, you need to wear a mask. I don't know, but then we would, then we should have a mask on too.
Right.
You know.
I think anybody coming in, we have the separation between the public and staff, I don't see a need there.
And we'll put signs on the door, recommended, but again, still, public, you know, public choice at that point. Personal responsibility to, to, to wear one or not, um, the only thing.
Well, wait a minute, not personal choice, I think it's, it's stronger than that.
Among staff, you mean, you mean employees?
Staff.
You mean staff?
And, and for the public, I mean, we can't, I know we can't force, but to say.
It's recommended, yes.
Choice of words. If you can wear one if you want, or, um, city council is mandating that people enter this building, wear a mask or something to that extent, there's a difference there. Word choices, I don't know, maybe that's a little strong, but, um.
Only clarification, are, is everyone okay with melting the ice tomorrow?
No.
I don't have any, no, economically, and they just gave us, I don't wanna be the only one in the state of Minnesota that took a big loss and we had the ice open.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We will shut it down tomorrow.
All right, no more business? Meeting adjourned.